Allegiance, of course.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We don't have a call you to if you want to say where your answer is. Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord God, once more and again to give you praise, honor, and thanks. We thank you for this day, if you may. As we come today to conduct the town business, I pray that everything can be decent and in order. Father God, as we always put our citizens first, not us, Lord God, help us to understand the things that we do and put them in place. Praying for this council, praying for this town, our first responders, and all the citizens. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sutler.
You're welcome.
All right. I will call your attention to Agenda Item Three, which is our consent items. I entertain a motion to approve. Before we go to the motion, I'll pass to Mr. Rory to just explain a bit about what's happening with this Ms. Barnes allocation.
We have received, as you clearly, a mini grant to twenty-three thousand dollars. Carlina, the town clerk, has been working with the Arts Council to make sure that we appropriately follow the procedures in terms of signing the documents. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that I won't be signing the document agreement, and I've already placed it into the budget book. So, Mr. Sutler.
All the classics?
I think most of them we can approve, consent item.
All the women, Thompson?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Motion carries, she did, and it was lit. And now we will move into open session, which is our budget workshop. So, Mr. Rory, take your watch.
Thank you. It's been an incredible two-week run. I think that there's procedural things that we're trying to follow, who we're trying to follow through. At the end of the day, we are making a budget presentation today so that it can be provided to the local government commission, so that they can have their budget presentation to the LGC prior to June the first, which is statutory in nature. So, forgive me, the last time we had a conversation about budget and budget policy, I said that I had fifty slides, but I thought that probably had sabotaged me, and I couldn't get all fifty. I promise you today, I actually have fifty slides. And so, I think it's of critical importance for us on behalf of the residents for the town of Spring Lake to have a thorough conversation in regards to what it means to be physically healthy in this community, what it means for us to move forward with some goals and initiatives of this board, and what it means in terms of our service delivery strategy for our community. It's been a tough two weeks. And so, on the screen right now, what you will see is I have already forwarded the budget message, the budget documents, the budget ordinance, and everything in our possession in regards of the town of Spring Lake budget to the local government commission. I've also provided you with a snapshot of what is basically about two hundred pages of what has been sent to the LGC. Basically, it's titled the Fiscal Year Management Budget. I will typically refer to this as the first thirty pages. After that, it becomes the detail about how many pencils we're buying and how many paper boxes we're buying. I don't expect to provide that to the board. Know that we do consider those items, and we try to move forward to be as efficient and effective as we can. One of the things that I have focused on is what has been identified by the Board of Artmen as strategic planning paths. They're really just encompassing broad statements about some of the things that we want to do, and how do we want to move forward. I will read a couple of them. I won't read all of them, so I'll make a warning with that, I know you can read. You also have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation as well. But it's worth noting that the first one, Strategic Planning Path, is very, very important as we go through the conversation regarding the budget tonight. First, it follows to build a competent, qualified, and ethical workforce who are committed to achieving the goals and objectives. We will talk extensively about our workforce tonight, okay? The second part of it, or the last bullet after, I think is very, very important, is for us to create the necessary infrastructure and develop opportunities to expand tax base and generate new jobs. Not that the other, the financial management system and the workplace mandated requirements is not important, but those two bookings from our employees to create development opportunities to expand our tax base are of critical importance for the town of Spring Lake if we move forward. Those are bookings in terms of planning paths, and we need to be very noted note that. It is my intent to walk you through the manager's proposed budget, and so this is my first slide telling you what I'm going to talk about. We're going to talk about a sanitation increase of eighty-nine dollars annually. We're going to talk about a stormwater increase of fifteen dollars annually. We're going to talk about water sewer increases that ranges anywhere from two dollars per month to nine dollars per month. Remember, those are usage fees based on tier rates, so that's how you have the range. And then finally, we're going to talk about ad valorem tax increases equivalent to nine point one cents per one hundred, which depending upon the very term "ad valorem," which means according to value. So, according to value, our median household, our median house price in Spring Lake will experience anywhere from seventy to a hundred and forty dollar annual tax. We'll talk a little bit more about that. What you have in front of you is a proposed spending plan. A budget is not a savings plan. It is a spending plan that you create, that you develop for the purposes of carrying out the policies of the Board of Artmen. And it's about mission orientation and services that are provided to your community. So, I often say, and you've heard me say it before, we could save a lot by spending nothing, but that's not the reason we're here. We're here to provide services, and I think there's an expectation for those services to be of high quality. Now, that's debatable in how you define quality, but there is a generalized expectation for them to not be poor services, but high-quality services. And with that comes a price tag in the spending plan which you have to follow. Stormwater Fund, the sanitation fund, and the water and sewer fund are all funds that are typically known as enterprise funds. By their very nature, they are businesslike. That means that their revenues have to match their expenses, and the entire programs are funded through fees, not taxes. Anytime you happen to use taxes to fund stormwater, sanitation, or water and sewer fund, you should be adjusting your fees first, not subsidizing to the statute of the general fund. And finally, the general fund at eight million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand. All of those funds together total a budget spending plan, approximately fifteen million dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. The budget presented to you tonight is balanced. We are required by the general statutes, well, let's just be very candid about it, the only one by law that's required to present a balanced budget is the town entity that is statutory driven. We cannot present above a budget that is outbalanced. Budget policy, as we go through day-to-day, looking at our activities and service delivery strategy, I always like to read these because I like to accent this concept of baseline funding. Where we're at, where we're going, what does it mean when you make decisions throughout a budget year? So, forgive me for reading to you. I know that the audience can read them on witness. The town's top program priority is to maintain existing service levels in all divisions and departments. I think you would all agree with that. To reflect this, the budget process should include the calculation of baseline funding levels for all departments, reflecting current staffing, inflationary increases in supplies and service budget. This baseline should serve as an agreed-upon point of departure for subsequent budget discussions, such as the impact of adding additional personnel or new facility or services. Any additional services above the baseline shall be fully funded. At the time of adoption of the annual budget, and ongoing funding sources shall be clearly identified. Such ongoing funding sources must be either new or increased revenues or clearly identified expense budgets. It is not hard. Here's your base. If you're going to change from that base, you either got to do expense cuts or increase the revenues. You can't grow at the base. You got to, you got to grow from the base. Baseline funding sources, just by way of reference, when you look at revenue increases, there's growth in the tax digest, which is equivalent to new growth. You hear concepts or conversations about, "I don't want," and I don't, I'm not being negative when I say this, "I don't want another garage," or "I don't want another this," or "I don't want another that, I want this, I want that." I agree with those sentiments, but at the end of the day, growth in the tax base is based on new growth or growth in the appraised values. So, we either have to have more homes, more businesses, or growth in the appraised value. The problem with growth in the appraised value is it doesn't necessarily mean growth or increases in cash flow, just the appraised value grows and then also your taxes. Fees for service or revenues increases, those user fees, those are typically associated with water sewer funds, other enterprise funds, impact fees, grants, and gifts, and tax increases. Expense reductions, program service reductions, or low shedding, economies of scale, public private partnerships, consolidations, nonprofits, we'll talk a little bit about those tonight. And finally, a reduction for. We're going to start from small to large. The low-hanging fruit is the stormwater fund. I chose these particular pictures on purpose. If you look to the picture in the left, you'll see this stormwater drain coming off of a road. The question typically comes up, who owns it? Who maintains that stormwater infrastructure? Is it the town? Is it the resident? Where does the town's responsibility begin to end versus the resident or the private property? We'll have those conversations day in, day out, all year long. And then finally, the one to the right, you can see a failed, a failed structure, which is going to cause water not to flow appropriately. In both cases, there are maintenance requirements and repair requirements associated with what comes from the stormwater fund. A lot of people call it the rain tax. There's probably some truth to that, but at the end of the day, they're also the ones that don't want their property flowing. They want to make sure that we're not polluting the community, this running, water running off the highways. The stormwater fund is balanced. I highlight this not just so that you can see it, I know you have copies of it, but just to kind of focus and move forward. You will notice that in one column, it says the manager recommended, you'll see this a little bit differently, you'll notice that the current year budget was two forty, two sixty-six. The manager recommendation is two sixty-four, eight fifty-four. And the chart to the right just simply charts the breakdown of the budget itself. Our goal is to maintain our budgets to where our personnel costs are at or around seventy percent of budget, our operational expenses are at or around twenty percent of budget, and our capital expenses are at or around ten percent.
Can you say that one more time?
I can do that. Our goal is to make our personnel expenses at or around seventy percent, our operational expenses at or around twenty, and our capital expenses at or around ten. Now, write this down there. It never works. Okay? It never works. But the whole purpose of the chart is to get folks to focus on the combination of what it takes to provide a service. I like to pick on Jarman, and I will do that later, Police Chief. It makes zero sense to have ten cars, right, and five police officers. It makes zero sense to have ten police officers, ten cars, and five dollars worth of gas. You got to combine the personnel, the capital, and the operation expenses to make sure you have an effective service delivery strategy. And when you look at this from a function of the total budget, if you, anywhere you give, you're taking from somewhere else, it's never, that's what I mean by that, it doesn't work. You have to take from somewhere to give here, and you're trying to make sure that these, these things are broke up into pie in some reasonable fashion to provide that service. The stormwater fund is balanced, but it comes with a rate increase. You will see this highlighted, and I'll talk about the increases as we go forward for each fund. I basically pulled straight from the stormwater schedule fees, as it is listed in our budget document that I have submitted to. This comes from our schedule of fees. I've made a couple edits to it so that it's very clear what we're talking about. Deanna is here, thankfully, so that I don't have to get the line about ERUs and everything else. Maybe she can give us information if you have any questions on that. But just to keep it simple, stormwater fees are based on equivalent residential units. One ERU is approximately two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six square feet. So, our rates that we're currently using today for stormwater were set at two thousand and seven. Okay? So, the recommendation is to increase the rate from two thousand and seven rates to two thousand and twenty-five rates to four dollars per ERU per month. So, the typical residential unit, in this case, everybody sitting on today is, would experience a four dollars per month ERU for roughly forty-eight dollars a year. Currently, I don't know that I brought them, but it's worth noting if I did, I hope I gave them to you. I pulled everybody up here as taxpayers. All right? And it shows that you guys, everybody up here, is paying thirty-three dollars per year for residential stormwater. That thirty-two dollars, thirty-three dollars is equivalent to two seventy-five on the five out of twelve. That's how you pay your stormwater bill on your tax bill. So, that will change going forward to four dollars, and it will go from thirty-three to forty-eight dollars a month. So, that's the delta in terms of what's registered today. It's the same with commercial rates. Commercial unit rates are a little bit different, but how you assess those and the other, the other rates of fees are simply for plan review fees and things that take time and energy. I'm always, uh...
John, before you call, I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, thank you. So, you said we're all paying thirty-three?
Yes.
A month?
A year.
A year?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to forty-eight years. How about, okay, gotcha.
Yes. In Georgia, mine was a hundred and eighty dollars a year. Just by way of reference.
Yep.
Every city does it different. And I want, I want, I want to explain that, hopefully, in a way that people can understand about investing in our infrastructure. So, the city in Georgia was developed and incorporated in nineteen sixties, all right? And what happened was, they started doing this mass development. It's a planned community, so the city's developed into different villages. So, they would develop a little bit over here, they carried water and sewer over there, lift stations, and all the infrastructure to support that development, that subdivision. Over here, they would do it because people wanted to live over here. So, I lived in Glenlock Village. It was just a, it's like a big, big humongous subdivision with sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred, two thousand homes in. As that city developed, and they put in infrastructure for water runoff, at the time, it was just simply swells on the side of the road. You see those today? But now, when you go back and you look at that picture, the one to the right, you have to think about, where is that water going once it gets past that concrete? Depending upon the city, in a lot of different cases, it goes into a pipe that's on this corrugated metal pipe. This is a lot of detail I know, but corrugated medical pipe, metal, uh, metal pipe has a life expectancy of twenty-five years. So, if you have a massive, a lot of growth in a short period of time, putting in CMP with a twenty-five-year lifespan, and then you go from nineteen sixty-five to twenty-twenty-five, what do you think's happening to all that CMP pipe? It's failing in its infrastructure. So, I highlight this because it's not about chasing stormwater infrastructure with this. What we need to do is back up and go, what are we going to allow people to put in the ground that we're going to ultimately have to maintain? That's a Trump council call, it's that philosophy of, you know, concrete seventy-five years, seventy-five, twenty-five years. It's a no-brainer, right? What are we going to have to maintain after the development is done? They sell the houses, and now who owns it? Uh, the infrastructure. That's the, the thinking in terms of the schedule of fees, but it's not enough. We also have to move forward and think about policies, developments, and how we, how those things take place. Highlighting initiatives for the stormwater fund, basically meeting permit standards. Y'all do recognize that at some point, we didn't talk about where rain and water went. That started happening about the late nineties, about how much water you trap, how much you contain, you know, all the different stuff in terms of freeboard, ponds, and a bunch of crazy stuff, engineers' language. I'm going to highlight a couple initiatives here, and you're going to hear this more than once, I promise. Recommend approval of a pay classification system to enhance our competitiveness by placing us in the top fifty percent of entry-level salary rates based upon North Carolina League of Municipalities salary survey data. All non-storm town employees would pay a minimum hourly rate of fourteen eighty-one per hour. You'll hear that, at least at the time to back. So, note, this is an internal pay classification study using the League of Municipalities data, and the goal is to set our salary entry rates at five percent above the average. That just puts us in the top fifty percent. When you look at our data, all right, it probably doesn't come much of a surprise that we usually fall at five percent near the bottom, okay? And so, we're going to chase that until we actually do something. So, another initiative there is to provide a percent coal or flat market rate adjustment for all of our, except sanitation, that's because of, I have folks that type. The sanitation fund, another large piece, but budgeted at eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four, had a, a small conversation today about recycling, the components associated with our sanitation. A lot of folks like to focus on recycling. At the, at the end of the day, recycling is costing money now, it's not making anybody any money, and so you end up with companies having to make decisions about how do they finance their operations. You can't, you can't take up a recycling bin and then use the truck to haul it clear across town, right, at a cost of ten dollars in fuel. And so, they're having to make these types of decisions about how do they, you know, how they reimburse and how they operate at a level with recycling. You'll hear people all the time talk about, "Well, they left on recycling, they dumped it in the same container as they dump the trash." This is what's going on now, this is real, right? It's just something to be aware of. So, the sanitation fund itself, it is balanced. You'll notice this one says two hundred and forty-seven thousand, and I just got to tell you, the sanitation fund is eight eighty-three. It's because this is where we have a public-private partnership. The town focuses mostly on yard debris. The sanitation company, in this case, GFL, they focus on our regular garbage, trash, and they do the pickup. So, we have a public-private partnership. So, it makes the question, why don't they pick up the yard debris too? It's really simple, because there ain't no money in it. That's why they don't do it. And so, we subsidize through the sanitation, the yard debris pickup throughout the entire town, and we do it with pretty, some equipment probably needs to replace. You see Steve out there, I'm going to shake his head or something. We've got some work to do there, too. Our contract, basically, manager recommendation for the sanitation fees going to our contractor is roughly four hundred and eighteen thousand. You'll see other transfers in terms of fleet, enterprise funds, fund balance increases, things of that nature. So, that's how you make up the eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Not going to spend a lot of time on trash. But there's a tax bill, there's a recommended, recommended increase. I want to show you and highlight something here. If you'll notice in red, it says the litter control fee. So, the residential fee increase is roughly twenty-five percent, so it's going from three oh seven to three eighty-four. We're recommending adding another twelve dollars annually, known as the litter control fee, so that we can actually exercise opportunities with, whether it's our appearance commission to do litter control pickup in our parks or something, a way to fund that activity. It's very small, twelve dollars annually, so I'm going to generate about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. But that's where you can start to think, say, okay, how do we do this? And so, as a resident, you would be paying twelve dollars a year to pick up trash, if you will, litter in town, but how does it get there? Not necessarily all the residents, but it is how you have to feel it. So, this is a way to kind of address this issue going forward, and we'll see how we make up this, that's the approach. Initiatives, there's that approval, that classification system again, and then mostly, mostly it's for contract revision, the twenty-five percent increase. John?
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Sorry?
It's okay, hey.
When you talk about the twelve dollars, can you, you probably already said it, I didn't pick it up, what revenue total are you expecting in that?
Twenty-one thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Now, remember, that's always, you'll see in my slides, I always got this little tilde in front of it. I never want to be beat up with my own number, so that's not absolute numbers, just that one. Water sewer fund, four billion, eight eighty-three, one seventy-six, but that includes multiple departments to include the water purchasing. We don't produce water, we don't have a water plant, so we have to purchase it in bulk from PWC, Hornet County, Revenue Collection Department, and Renee is here, Revenue, Revenue Collection, Revenue Billing is basically our figure of yours. Doc. Toby. Doing what, like? Danny. Danny in? All right, I'm trying. We had a goddess, but the goddess has left us, you know why? You have a guess? Penny. Penny. Go figure. Wastewater Treatment Plant and Ultimate Debt Service. Just a highlight there.
Number seven?
Thank you. My question is, did we get increase for Hornet County or PWC on the water this year?
Yes. Forgive me, it escapes me right now, what personal tax looks, but it was an increase. Thank you. Revenue collections, in this case, once again, we chart it. It's interesting to note, Renee and I had a conversation today. If you notice the chart over there, it says personnel forty-six percent, operations fifty-four percent, capital zero. Actually, I think there's probably something more than zero, I don't know the register. What's interesting in this is there's two components here. You'll, you'll note that I said no ten percent increase for SAD. So, you'll see this throughout, but there's, there's various reasons why I'm showing that. So, I've got a water and sewer fund with a department requesting a ten percent increase for the SAD, because they're losing those. I get it, I understand. The second component to note is, if you look to the spreadsheet to the left, and you see the term professional services at two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, those are financial services being provided by outsourced contractors. Okay? So, just a highlight, and I don't mean this in any form or fashion other than what it is. Right now, we're spending about ninety thousand dollars a month for outsourced contractors. It is actual to stop that quickly. We'll talk more about that. Wastewater Treatment Plant.
One more question, everyone?
Thank you. I've always been curious about the bank service charges.
They are too low, we're losing about sixty thousand dollars a year.
On the bank service charges and, um, revenue collections? What, what are, what are those service charges, though?
A lot of this, Renee helped, credit card.
Yeah, credit cards. So, my question has always been, why is it that we take on that, we, can't we add anything to the payment?
Yes, and you will see later, the schedule of fee work, we're going to do it exactly right now.
I think we're, we're losing that money because we're just not, people aren't paying the bills.
I think, if we're, we're losing that money because we're just not, people aren't paying the bills, or?
We're not charging appropriate fees for conveniences, we need to increase it.
Yeah, because our convenience fee is only a dollar fifty.
Right. What should it be?
Four dollars.
Wow! It should be four. So if you, but if you do auto pay, you don't need the convenience fee, correct?
No.
Right. So that makes it push people to auto pay.
No, we need to.
Yeah, big drive.
Alright, well, this is one of those philosophical economic things, right? In the, the sense of, we need to encourage people to auto pay and to pay with their cards. So we don't encourage them or incentivize them to not come to the front door, not do things, not have an auto draft if we just simply jack up the fee. So we gotta be in balance on this, that's why I say four dollars. But the conversation has been, we, first, we have to have costs recovered, period. We gotta do that. Uh, second, we gotta figure out ways to incentivize auto pay, auto draft, so that we don't have to take it like this stuff. That's another story, July one to beyond. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, no five percent increase for staff. Note the chart, once again, fifty-one percent operations, thirty-one percent personnel. We're doing pretty good there, aren't we? The operational expenses, uh, and the capital's eighteen percent. That's because we're looking at about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year to bear to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, but the five percent increase was budgeted for, now, I think, water sewer fund includes collections, filling, and wastewater. One's budgeted for ten percent, the other's budgeted for five percent. Yeah, that'll work. That's not how we roll out. Um, we're gonna have to roll a little different exactly. There's your increases in terms of the water, um, not a lot, still an increase. Here's your fees, um, we will, let's slow for just a second over there. When you hear us talking about the increase to the water sewer fund fees, this is based on a, a water rate study from twenty-twenty. It is located and available on our website. All we're doing is maxing those rates. Um, and then the recommendation was that we would increase it from twenty-four to twenty-five by five percent. And so you'll note that the flat fee goes, uh, flat fee is closer to about a three percent, but the tier rates are at the five percent. And so it doesn't create a dramatic shift in your out-of-pocket expenses. So when you go back and you think about what I talked about with the water sewer fund being anywhere from two to nine dollars. Depends on the usage. And we actually started doing a little analysis and started thinking about how some of these fees need to be thought about for the future. It's important for us to think about ten years from now, not ten days from now. Ten years from now. So these fees are incredibly important in terms of the maintenance of the system. So, um, I built in a little analysis for you. Um, you'll hear me say it many, many times, staff has already heard, do math, do math, do the math. We had a meeting in here a couple of weeks ago, Deanna and I and, uh, staff, we talked about it in our DLT meetings, about what does it cost to expand a plant? So I just wrote this down here in terms of, and I, and I highlight it, and I walk through it, and I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot. But this is so that you have somewhere to go with you. Um, our current operating capacity is one point five billion gallons per day. If we're currently operating at seventy percent capacity, how much capacity is available for growth? Usually three thousand, three hundred GPD per home? It's a tricky question, because if you simply go, what's, you know, what's left after seventy percent of one point five? You come up with a number, but it gives you zero buffer. Alright? They're not gonna carry it up to the last ounce before they say, wait a minute! You gotta do something different here. Usually those standards fall about beginning of construction and expansion, somewhere between the eighty and ninety percent range. Um, so that leaves you, even with this map, if you look at it, you know, if you got five hundred thousand capacity, which technically is incorrect, you only have the capacity in the plant for a hundred, a thousand, six hundred sixty-six homes. Now, you might think that's a lot, but, uh, as manager of Georgia, I oversaw a development that built sixteen hundred homes in three years. Okay? It's a lot. Uh, but it really isn't. So then you start thinking about capacity. So we asked the question to one of our consulting engineers, what does it cost to expand the plant by a million? Or a, in fact, a million gallons per day or one MGV? And he says, well, it's gonna be anywhere from twenty to thirty million. So it leaves you with a question. How much should we be charging to connect to our system? Those sitting in this room, alright, uh, in some form or fashion, pay for the one point five MGV. Through the rates, through the fees, the bond debt, whatever may be. So those who are moving into should have to bear some of the costs of that one point five. So they're connecting to whatever capacity is available, because you built it. If you didn't build it, they couldn't connect to it. Then you have density questions, you have all kinds of stuff in terms of how you roll out subdivision. This is another critical, when I talked about the fourth bullet, about creating jobs, economic development, the opportunities. These are the types of things you have to be thinking about, and one of them is expansion of the plant. Your growth and your density is going to be limited to your capacity. And so if you don't deal with those issues now, somebody's going to do later. Uh, and it's going to get to where you happen to take in tax, 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 instead of growing, instead of growing tax rate.
And highlighting the, the rates for customers outside of our corporate limits.
Yeah.
That is a huge, huge thing, and I'm so glad to see that in there. Again, uh, we pay our taxes to the town of Spring Lake. Um, those everybody in the county pay their taxes to the county, but they are using our resources. So, um, taxing them to, to be a part or to use our resources that, again, go onto our capacity, I think this is a huge, a huge deal. So if you didn't see this on the water and sewer fund revenue highlights, rates for customers who reside outside the corporate limits of the town of Spring Lake will be charged double rates for water.
So my question is, does that really cover all of the costs if we incur?
No.
I think so. I wouldn't have.
So, uh, let's, let's look at it this way. Uh, the three hundred, uh, three hundred, uh, GPD, you're gonna expand by a million. Um, and every five hundred thousand is sixteen sixty-six. So what should you be charging to two thousand, uh, or sixteen sixty-six, one to five by two? You're gonna come up with like nine thousand dollars per customer for capital and stuff. So it really does carve in terms of capacity. I'm coming from a town, a city, that as an economic development init- initiative, gave away eight hundred thousand gallons per day to build a turkey plant. To create jobs, paying forty thousand dollars a year for people to live outside the city. Um, wasn't necessarily a bad deal, but it wasn't a great deal. Because even though they gave away the eight hundred thousand capacity, they have the eight hundred thousand capacity in terms of revenue coming into sewer. But to do that, they had to cash for the six, six million dollars alone. So you can see now, all of a sudden, you only get in four hundred thousand, and by the time you look at the cleanup cost, you get close to zero. You gotta do math. Gotta do the math. Water and sewer fund revenue highlights. Uh, older woman, Cooper, I think this specifically speaks to your issue. Alright? System development fees, um, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. Uh, Lynn and I talked about this, this week as well. We know we need to do better. We need to probably have a, a, a little bit further analysis in terms of these development fees and see what they should be. Um, from South Carolina, sewer fee's three thousand dollars per residential unit. Water fee is two thousand and something per residential. So what's, it helped me, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong. This one said if I build a two-bedroom, I pay a thousand bucks?
Yes, sir.
Stuff like that. Uh, sewer fund initiatives, I'm only gonna highlight, but notice that one had a pay classification system there again. Uh, I wanna highlight, uh, the two at the bottom, actually. Asset inventory assessment and regionalization study. Um, we are currently underway with grant proceeds doing an asset inventory assessment. Early indications suggest that we're going to have some expenses associated with, uh, fixing and repairs. Uh, Deanna was the host of a tour of our wastewater treatment plant. I couldn't join, enjoy her much, but I'd give you to go down there and see it for a few minutes. Um, we got some, some sniff, uh, you know what I'm saying, significant repairs we need to do for the wastewater treatment plant. This weekend, I got a email from Deanna, her and Henry, dealing with some issues, some repair, uh, something wasn't working right. They were able to successfully handle that, and I very much appreciate their, um, focus on getting it done. Thank you. Invest in system repairs and maintenance in the wastewater treatment plant, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The reason why I blew the highlight at that one is that maybe I would get a.
I was thinking that was low.
And maybe I would get a. Typically, what you find is, uh, now, this is just from other cities, not that it's right or wrong, is that they underfund in the budget what we will refer to as renewal and expansion or renewal and extension. And so they'll have some little small line item to fix stuff. Um, but they're, as they're trying to balance the budget, that line item never grows proportionately to inflationary costs. That's why it looks like a little bit of, and so, cause it is. It needs to grow, but you gotta figure out how to grow it. Uh, that gives me an opportunity, now that you've heard me talk about that classification. Um, I have submitted to the LGC, uh, manager recommendation for this position for a classification plant that looks at the starting rates for all of our employees. Now, focus on the starting rate, the entry rate, um, at the minimum here. You'll notice that the minimum, uh, grade that we have for the town of Spring Lake is forty-eight. I adjusted that based on the NCLM data, where the minimum for a custodian, he's here, by the way, I just seen him through the door.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the mini, the minimum for our custodian would make thirty thousand, three hundred five per year, which is roughly fourteen eighty-one per hour. Uh, there's a whole national focus on what the paralel rates are. Um, however, you'll see that the next one down there, the maintenance technicians, the meter reader, senior meter reader. Um, this is a better delta because the senior meter reader comes to my head in terms of the number. Um, so if you look at the minimum at thirty-five, um, he's closer to the midpoint. So even though we have a minimum of seventeen nineteen, he's closer to the mid, midpoint over time. That's the idea, it's progressable up to midpoint. Now, from the midpoint to maximum, also, but we need to figure out how to progress our coach up to that midpoint. Ignoring it is obsolete. Inspection supervisor, the minimum is fifty-two thousand, the maximum seventy-nine. The inspection supervisor is sitting in the audience, and she's already over the maximum. I just had to see if you were awake. I just, I see if you were awake. That is not true, I am telling the story, okay, I'm telling the story. I just had to.
Oh, shit, I haven't heard, sir.
Yeah, they, now, what I highlight, they've been very helpful to y'all over the past couple of weeks gathering data, getting information, putting it together, um, trying to, so that we can think about how this stuff, uh, Carol with the fire department's been very helpful. And then executive man, if you look at the minimum of eighty-five, um, that's basically forty dollars an hour. The maximum up to a hundred twenty-seven. These are directors that would fall into a category typically, if you look at water resource directors, those are, those are routinely engineers, alright? They're, they're not, they're not the guy who, uh, worked in the field for twenty years. They're engineers that understand flows, capacity design standards, uh, and how to aggregate managers, but nevertheless, they are engineers. Um, we move forward with that one. General fund revenue highlights, um, you notice we're getting to the general fund. Uh, the only thing to, to focus here is you'll look at the nine point one cent tax increase. Um, we have to think about cents. The value of one penny on our tax rate with a ninety-eight percent collection, you'll see this in the budget message, generates forty-one thousand dollars per year. So one penny generates forty-one thousand dollars a year. So if you raise that add-to-the-law and property tax by nine point one cent, you're generating three hundred and seventy-eight thousand tilted approximately in additional add-to-the-law of taxes according to value, right? So the higher the price value of your home, the more you pay taxes, the lower, the lower you pay the taxes. It's according to value. Um, that is a progressive tax rate structure, um, that exists everywhere across the nation. Um, unless it's, you know, so the sales tax. So you'll see the proposed tax rate is going to point seven four one. Even with the nine point one cent tax increase, you're only gonna realize approximately three hundred seventy-eight thousand in additional revenue for the general fund. Uh, those highlights, the next one is that, um, now, note, note here that the, on the, the property tax, it's two million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand in revenue. If you look at the sales tax across all the different sales tax articles, it's three point four eight billion. We're at a critical juncture here in our, in our understanding and our thoughts. So if I raise the tax by nine point one cents, it generates forty-one thousand dollars. That is a, that is a direct, that is the correlation to what the value of our tax digestives is, okay? So when we compare our tax rate to our neighbors, it is an apples and oranges comparison. We have to focus not on the tax rate, the value of the tax digest, okay? Not the tax rate. So we have to do a tax rate based on the value of the tax digest to generate the revenue. The second part of this highlight is that the sales tax of three point four million dollars, I still have an answer that we're going to, uh, spoke, uh, via email, the county manager this week, whenever, what last week? Um, yeah, last week. And the thought was that next year, when we go through a reevaluation, reappraisal of our property, we're gonna see a, a proper increase, value increase. That stands the reason when you look at inflation. So, but the number of our sales tax loss is coming anywhere from five hundred thousand to one point four billion. The, at the end of the day, I can't give you an honest answer right now, what I would even estimate or estimate, it's been all over the board. But let's keep it simple, uh, and so we're gonna keep it real. Keep it real. Um, that's a conversation she and I had. Uh, we're gonna keep it real. The, so, let's just say that we're gonna lose five hundred thousand in sales tax revenue. Now, we gotta make it up somewhere. And so we either gotta have increased revenues or clearly identify expense cuts. So our second highest revenue stream current is our property tax. So a nine cent increase only generates three seven. What does it take to generate five hundred thousand dollar loss in sales tax? Another ten plus. If it's a billion plus, one point four billion, I think mathematically that relates to a third force of tax. It's astronomical. Um, it is important for board and for our residents, um, to understand that that's, it's, that's on our horizon. I don't know what that number is, but we gotta be planning, we gotta think. Anywhere from five hundred thousand to one point eight billion. Bunch.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would, I would hedge it, I probably would go up to one point eight, but I would, I would stick to that one point four, I could get hurt one time. Cause I've had, I've got, uh, data numbers all over the place. Um, and if you really wanna be gambling, bet on the bill. Bet on the bill, and there you go. Uh, general fund initiatives and expense highlights.
Oh, that question?
Yes.
There, thank you. Me, um, thanks, Ray. Do you remember when the last time it was raised?
I do not, uh.
The tax, taxes were raised, were raised. What was the next rate?
It wasn't that long ago.
Twenty seventeen?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, I, I do not know, um, suppose I can find out.
Uh, cause she's already going in.
The, uh, so, um, the general fund initiative expense highlights. You'll notice that when you look at your budget documents, there's a host of departments that are located in the general fund. I only wanna talk about, uh, those four that are highlighted in blue. Um, not that the rest of them aren't important. For example, you see human resources at ninety-six thousand dollars. That's a brand new one. That's a new department, so that's an increase in our headcount. To, to budget or manage the increase in that headcount in human re- resources, I froze and unfunded an executive assistant position that shows up in the administration department. So it's unfunded, it's done, gone, alright? I need to focus on HR. Um, I can tackle those. Well, as much as we can. The, uh, so I wanna focus on these, these four departments going forward. First and foremost, uh, I want you to do a couple of things here. So, two weeks ago, this is where we were at. Highlighted in green, okay? So down there at the bottom, you'll notice under the total department request, two weeks ago, we were nine hundred thousand dollars in the hole. We're in the red, nine hundred thousand. We cannot, I cannot recommend a budget that's out balanced by one dollar. We have to balance. We were nine hundred thousand in the red. I highlighted the Manchester, cause we're gonna talk about that a little bit further. Uh, Chief Williams is here, uh, he and I have discussed this quite, quite a bit. Chief John and I have discussed the police department, we'll talk about that a little bit. Um, it's nothing popular, but it is what it is. So the twenty-four, twenty-five department requests, um, you'll notice that from over a two-week period, it went for the Manchester from seven sixty-six, five oh nine, to now the manager's recommendation for five eighty-six. So roughly two hundred thousand dollar drop. That's personnel drop. Remember the seven twenty ten? It's personnel. So we'll come back to that, talk a little bit more about it. So, um, you'll see this more than once. So this is just basically at the bottom of this spreadsheet in my budget. You won't necessarily see it in yours, uh, but it's, you know, just data that we work with and try to figure out stuff. So, um, if you notice over here, somehow none of y'all got my mouse, right? Um, you'll see there's a shortfall, uh, general fund shortfall of a hundred and four thousand. You'll see it here as well. So we started with trying to, to crank out, look at different things about what it would mean if we did this. So, we finally, when I, when I took the executive assistant out, did this and did that, we ended up with a shortfall of six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, which is equivalent to that fifteen point six tax increase. Notice you're not hearing a fifteen point cent, point six tax increase, okay? So, uh, the bulk of that comes from thirteen point one for the Manchester, right? Or two and a half to balance the shortfall for these items over here. Basically a hundred and four thousand dollars to adjust our taping. You see what I'm saying? These little things, um, that are in there to look at all of our employees, try to deal with it. So, then you have this other fifty percent. And so it, it is my belief that, uh, we need to focus on what that's going to mean for the Manchester Fire District. And so, the way it was put to me is that, well, if we don't get this, the decisions are gonna have to be made, absolutely. Decisions are gonna have to be made. Um, I'm trying to budget for a smaller fall, okay? Than that fourth decision, a smaller fall. Um, and that's what this is showing over here. So we'll come back to that. And then down here, don't miss this, you'll see it again. Un-audited total fund balance, four million dollars. I can't tell you, I've been kind of, from twelve million, twelve million, twelve million.
I was gonna ask how you got this because they've been requesting it for a year.
Um, the, the, I got it. Uh, Deborah and I talked and the, the un-audited means it's not real until we completely audit. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But it's a guesstimate, but still at a guesstimate, right? That recommend for all of our funds, we're still short of fund balance. So we can't be spending out of fund balance. We gotta still build that. So, the reason I got it, is I asked what would it cost in taxes to raise our fund balance by five percent? Remember us talking about revenues, finance expenses equal fund balance? And so we always need to be adding to that fund balance. Because when we're adding to that fund balance, it allows us to, uh, less debt, uh, more page you go, uh, interest income, all the different things. So we don't wanna be taking from the fund balance, we wanna be adding to it. But every once in a while, we might scratch it a little bit, just depends on what those percentages are. Those initiatives, uh, fire departments, a couple of front engine imaging cameras. Uh, I can tell you right now, I'm not sure that that number is right, if that's okay, I can adjust that going forward, I'm not overly concerned about it. Uh, police vehicles, we're leasing police vehicles, I do not recall how many that is. Um, John, remind, the total number, yeah, it's a bunch. They range from like eighteen, nineteen. So, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year for police vehicles. Um, now these are all general funds, so you take that number and you divide it by forty-one thousand, you come up with a tax per cent that's dedicated just to police vehicles, right? One way of thinking about it. Um, fiscal, fiscal accountability degree, we'll talk about that a little bit more too, with the, uh, five full-time finance positions to replace outsourced contractors. Note that's almost half a million dollars. Finally, uh, human resource specialists, building inspectors, uh, there's that day of classification study again, very important. Three percent cola, except for the PD, um, that was a twenty percent range. We did a couple of months ago, I guess. Uh, flat market rate in two thousand to the fire department. Um, I will leave this and I will say publicly right now, right off the bat, uh, that number is public. It should be more, okay? Uh, but we gotta get there in the middle, we can't just jump into it. Building repairs, HVAC office space, while I'm here working Monday, during the holiday, um, the HVAC's working up and Renee and I have to mop floors down here because it's leaking out of the roof, we're both working Monday. Um, she got them off. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
She got them off, whatever it takes. Um, partnerships, customer, uh, new computer system, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar earning. We need to take a move on that, um, get it done, move it forward. There's the full, Tamil fund approximately two hundred and fifty thousand shortage of funding for the Manchester Fire District. We provide additional staffing for the town of Spring Lake City. Okay, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Finance, um, just highlight the general fund of the finance department. You'll see the two red arrows, one of them is the salary wages for full-time employees. Uh, look at three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one. Then you'll see the next red line down there for professional service, look at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Then you'll see this offset for lax expenses, um, for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, bringing you to a total manager recommended budget of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
For, for next year?
For next year. Alright, for next year. Now, pause for a second. Pause for a second, alright? So we have interviewed two candidates to be the HR manager. I have interviewed, uh, one candidate, a couple more as an accountant, um, in the finance department. So basically, you're putting one in, taking one out, you got it? That's the goal. As soon as we can put them in, we'll take them out. Um, however, I don't think that you should just take them all out at once, because we got two audits that we need to continue looking for. So we are dependent upon history, data, um, mining, our records, our books, um, to try to come up with stuff. That's why we don't have an adequate appropriate fund balance, because it's unaudited until we get those audits done. And so, you know, I, the people who are here with that are different, are figuring out where the different things are. And that's why we gotta take a good inflation audit and get it done. So, uh, I'm not suggesting that this will work this way. It is a budget going forward and it is my goal to put our folks, I've already selected a finance director. Um, it's gonna cost, you know, I follow people. You hear me say it over and over again, over and over again, that, um, we do not want to be the employer of last resort. We want to be the employer of choice. If we're the employer of last resort, that means we get what nobody else will hire. Um, we gotta do a little bit of that.
We have a question. Email in the audit, where are we?
We signed, we signed a contract.
We, we signed a contract about six months ago. Signed a contract to about three, four weeks ago. That's not what we were doing. The contract did not come to me until?
Yeah, she told us that, the contract was.
So I got it.
Because it was late and we were waiting on LGC, uh, to get approved. So, I have a question about, uh, so you got a finance director, are you waiting for this budget to pass to put them in place? Is that what you're waiting on?
Yeah, I'm not even gonna take, if you start playing the game, July first, we're gonna do.
Look, I need to go back to my first question. They stood up here in a meeting and said they had signed a contract for the auditors months ago. Now you're telling me, yeah, that might be my.
There was, I remember that, uh, the LGC said there was, there had to be certain approval, that was a temporary, because there was an increase to the costs that they were expecting for the audits, because of the additional testing. But I don't remember anything about the signing of the contract.
There was.
Until the mayor said so, like, last month.
About four weeks ago, is when we signed it, but I know they were, they did stand up and said that they were securing the auditor, um, and that they had been working with Cherry Becker, but we hadn't gotten anything in stone yet until.
When exactly? When the mayor did say that we had already thought that it was in the work, like, work was already being done.
You know, maybe, I mean, the, the contract is signed, so.
That's the only update we have, it sounds like, but I, I agree with it. What is reasonable?
Six months? I, 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 you know, once again, coming from another, uh, another seat, my last argument was if the budget closes in June, I want the audit concluded before January first. I wanna have an end-of-year analysis of where we're at in the new budget, so we can make decisions. And so that, that six-month period, but what, what we were getting was eighty-nine months periods on the audit. And so, I, I went back and I wanted to highlight something just for you. You'll notice that we've got eighty thousand dollars for professional services audit. And so there is some hope. I'm a glass half empty on this now. There's some hope that we can do parallel for twenty-two and twenty-three at the same time. Some hope. Um, I think there's a old saying, hope's not a tactic. Uh, there it is. I don't have a good, I don't have a good answer for you.
So the, but the current year I thought was less than eighty, I thought it was like forty.
Forty-two, I believe it was. And so this is what's moving with this. So, you know, we have the new, the new op that says that they can withhold some of our sales tax. And that's based on one and a half times what the auditors. So if it's forty-two, that's why they could be withholding sixty thousand dollars of our sales tax and not distributing it. So just take one and a half cents on our tax rate. So it's in our interest to get it done. Um, and I think that's, that's encouraging, but I'm still half, half empty on this.
And so that eighty thousand is for hopefully getting twenty-one, or twenty-two.
That, that is the way I understand it.
Baker's promise.
Police, um, threes, sound bites. The police is the largest budget, uh, for the town of Spring Lake. Uh, you'll notice once again, it charted out, um, eighty-two percent on personnel expenses, operations is fourteen, and capital. So when we, you hear me talk about police and fire, the public safety, um, they're both labor and capital intensive. It's expensive to buy a fire truck. It's expensive to put firefighters on it, okay? So, what we have to look at in terms of our public safety resources is what's appropriate, adequate, and acceptable, okay? So having, uh, fifty police officers doesn't, is not necessarily appropriate, nor is it necessarily acceptable. It's, you know, you're having to think about what these adequate, adequate protection, uh, systems are in place. And so one of the things that we need to be thinking about is unit hour utilization. We need to think about what patrol officer's doing, what detective's doing, how are they spending their time? How do you benchmark that time? Can they do dual roles? Uh, so I've shared with the chief John, there's a lady that I grew up with who became a police chief, bless her heart. Instead of a fire chief, alright? Bless her heart. Um, but she left being a police chief, she didn't retire, but she left being a police chief and went to Sunset Beach and became a patrol officer. The idea is to move to the beach, not necessarily be police chief. It was a smaller department. And so I noticed on Facebook here recently, she is now a, um, patrol detective. I'm getting that wrong, okay? So basically what's happening is, you know, how do you, how do you allocate those resources and what do they do? So does all detective activities occur between eight to five, money to crack? Do they occur seven days, three sixty-five? Do you go meet people when they're there, when they're not there? Um, this is what we mean about staffing and relationship with the police and the general fund. Perfect, adequate, and acceptable. Um, it's a challenge for us to look at that in all of our departments, not just the police department. But with that, um, we have frozen and unfunded, we have not eliminated, we have frozen and unfunded four patrol officer vacancies in the police department. Uh, we are looking at how that we reorganize in terms of, with our implementation, maximizing efficiency of staff, what they do, what hours they work, um, how they do some things together. Uh, I thought I had a question here, I guess not. One of the things to think about with this is once again, combining all of those resources together, operations, personnel, capital. How do you do different things, you know? How does that work across the board, with everybody? So, a joke frequently with, uh, police chiefs about, you know, when crime rates are high, we need more people. Then when crime rates are low, we need more people, so we can keep crime rates low. He has, we, we joke about it, and it is a joke, I'm not being serious about this. It is a joke. Um, it's just one of those kind of five police relationships, appropriate, adequate, and acceptable. And so we can have day in, day out, people talking about, we need more of this, more of this, more of this, more of this. But then you enter into conversations about, I'll also need this, I'll also need this, I want this, how do we should do this, can't you just? Um, that's the role of the manager, to look at across all the different departments, figure out how to slice these parts, personnel, operations, capital, so we can provide services. The only thing that's important is if you need a police officer, or a certified, that's a tragic, you can take that. You know, so it just depends, appropriate, adequate, and acceptable. Um, it's a defining moment for us, how we report. Manchester Fire, um, this is a philosophical debate, but it's also one of ultimate concern when you look at our taxing structure and our resource allocation for the town and outside of the town. So I would ask everybody here, would you, um, want to tax all of our residents for Station Five in the CFA?
No.
Or should? Right? Um, or how about Station Five in, uh, LA? Um, or how about Station Five in, uh, LA? You know, you do it all the time. That's how we get distribution grants instead of the federal level. Your tax income wise, and then give it back to you for grants. Those grants are what's known as comp's grants, or safer grants, for fire, whatever. So, they take your income taxes and redistribute it through feds to different places based on need. So, we do it all the time, but in this case, I'm talking about outdoor property taxes. When we tax our residents to provide, property taxes to provide services for Station Five availability. And the answer typically becomes, no. You would share a resource from Station Five on a mutual aid basis if needed. You want that resources to be shared, that's just good practice. So, when we talk about the Manchester Fire District, um, what's happening is, and my numbers are gonna be, be wrong, so Jason jumped in, helped me here, um, I got it here somewhere, I just wanna get through the files. The, what the town gets for Manchester is two hundred and sixty. How much?
Hundred sixty-two thousand.
Hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. And so, the, the, the budget, if you look at here, the total department request to fund it is in seven sixty-six, five oh nine. Um, you can't simply fire a bullet and kill it all, right? It's there, so you've got the head services associated with the safety, um, you've got the staffing associated that comes in in response to the town. And the town goes to Manchester, this is an agreement working together. Um, so, my, the manager's recommendation is that we are going to freeze and unfund three positions in the fire department. Two of them are vacant, um, one of them remains to be turned, right? But, and then in that case, you would redistribute your staff, it might be three, three, instead of four, three, or something along those lines. You're still trying to get those communities out. But my recommendation is to tax our residents to balance the shortfall between what we're providing, so that we can call two or three people from Manchester into the town on an absentee basis to serve our town, just like we do our town, certainly. Um, I don't like it, but it's, I think it's very reasonable to think about how we work together. Um, the chief has been in constant contact recently with the county about funding levels, what that means. This is another reason that I am a glass half empty. And so, what's in front of you is a proposal to fund, um, half of the, what we consider to be the revenue shortfall for the Manchester, that's what I was talking about in my body earlier, this number, this fifty percent up here. So, the bulk of your nine point one cent tax increase is to cover the revenue shortfall for the Manchester Fire District, or roughly about six point six cents for that. Uh, that's where we're at, um.
Did the county just flat foot say, no, they're not gonna give us more money?
No.
They have, they have not, but we, we've been fighting pretty good with them back and forth. I got the chief association working with me a little bit on, um, they just, I can't get them to give me an answer as soon as I walk in. Um, you know, last time I went down there, I was pretty much threatened, and they doubled the police. Now, this, forever, they paid us eighty-two thousand, uh, and they finally moved it up to a hundred and sixty something. Now, they need to give us what we should be, well, should be three hundred or something thousand, several thousand dollars, uh, to catch up to everybody else that run for us many calls we do for out there. Um, they do come into town, so I understand that, that it's a, a half kind of thing. But we still want five hundred calls out there to take care of that area and some mutual aid stuff, so. Um, yeah, I'm still fighting with that, he asks me every time this evening, hey, what'd you heard, what'd you heard, what'd you heard? Uh, I keep making phone calls and then.
You mean John?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, he keeps asking me every time, say, hey, and, and I'll try to get something done, because I don't want them to end up choosing to. I don't think it's fair that they, we're paying for, for a service that, that, you know, we're taking care of out there. Uh, they do that, they get go, that's why we put it out there, we should at least get some of the wealth that comes from the county for that. Uh, they keep lowballing me, so maybe we can work something out there soon.
Can you equip us with that data too, so that we can at least talk to them from elected to elected, to see how that works as well?
Yeah, I'll back it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Done, done. Mayor Thornton?
Uh, thank you. What about, uh, have you had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Fuller, the manager?
Not regarding this issue. This, this, I believe, is a chief's association and a chief's issue, it's not really a county matter. You see, the, the district is taxed, we do a separate tax, fifteen, ten, is that right?
Ten.
Ten, um, the maximum to go up is fifteen. So, the, the county has the authority to increase the tax to fund the operation, or keep it at ten. But either way, something's gotta be. So, I have not had a conversation, the last email exchange we had was lunch in, uh, June, because he's dealing with the same thing. You have school crossing alarms, that he, he's, he's in the same boat, trying to figure out it. Both of us, so that's why this, this shortfall here is budgeted, um, and is requested. Um, I don't like it, but I just, I simply can't not present a balanced budget. And I'm not supportive of just simply killing it off. So, therefore, I think we're just trying to listen to the ball, and see where the chips fall as we go through the negotiating, you know, we're just, we're just not there.
The negotiating, we wouldn't know until, it, it'll be sometime, we won't know what they're willing to increase that one.
That's correct, and I have to submit this document to the LGC for presentation by June first, and today is June May twenty-ninth. That's the timeline that I'm working against, so I have to make a decision, you know, gotta make a decision. There's that recommend applicable pay cash fish system, breaking the law, Steve. Um, finance, everybody going backwards. I think, did I do that?
You were showing us the, the, the tax for the fire station.
Thank you for updating, I did get off there, wrong, I'm going to slide. Uh, that's cool, y'all, this is inspection, there's that, uh, activity up there, you see it, inspection? Uh, just, I, y'all know, I know, I, I will fix it, I know, uh, I didn't type that, but. Thank you, man, thank you for receiving, I appreciate it. The, uh, revenues, uh, this is another big topic, I was in the debate, notice the double department request, three hundred and six, manager recommendation, two ninety-one, five seventy-six. You'll see the chart breakdown here, seventy-five percent personnel, operations, and capital, revenues one sixteen. This is simply highlighting that we're, we got revenues of one sixteen, the operating inspections department at two ninety-one. Cost is three times as much as we're getting in revenues. This is where I typically lead into the mid years and the come years. Um, I should not be paid for the building inspections at the house, you should be paid for that. And so, um, the goal, and if you, when you look to the budget message, is to limit the general fund subsidy to the inspection department to ten percent or less. It's okay to have some subsidy, but in this case, it's, um, dramatically out of balance. So, the question becomes, what should the fees be? Um, an honest answer is that I don't know at this point. And so, we simply adjusted above ten dollars or ten percent, uh, to try to reflect and capture some of the things that we need to be focused on in terms of this, uh, clearing these inspections. So, now think about this, what is the total cost per hour for a building inspector?
Seventy-five, that's what it was?
That's a pretty good guess, uh, what we charge is seventy dollars, right? And so, when you look at fifty-eight thousand and that, forty-eight, forty percent of that, and divide it by twenty-eight, you'll tell that was a pretty significant number, while you look at salary benefits. So, the, the inspection department should be operating similar to the enterprise one. The fees should fund the operation with some limited subsidy, I, I understand that, because eventually you're gonna follow our outdoor tax, property tax. But we're out of balance with that, um, and we gotta focus on that. Um, these are typically things that you could actually negotiate as part of an economic development strategy. So, you do the fees, and some company comes in here, they wanna fast track, um, permitting, they wanna say, can you waive, uh, inspection fees? The answer to that is yes and no, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, uh, it depends on what they're doing, they're, they're doing. Um, some of them are, in, in Jason's case, their, their permits, some of them are required, some of them are technical, some of them are optional. I don't know if y'all have, y'all have optionals or not, but, um, it's just a moving target. So, that's the whole purpose of having this discussion about inspections. We did increase the rates in the fee schedule by ten percent or ten dollars, that's right, okay? But after we get into July, you'll also notice in the budget that message, we need to have a comprehensive analysis of what our fee structure is for building, for everything, in particular, for the building department. What time is it? I'm getting.
Seven twenty-one.
I'm doing, I'm doing, I'm doing, alright, uh, manager proposed budget impacts. There, you see it, eighty-nine annually, fifteen annually, two dollars per month to nine dollars per month, seventy dollars to a hundred and forty dollars annually. So, I, I told you, now we're getting in, right? Um, so this is what the impact is, it's in your documents, we'll talk about that. This is where I now go off my, I go off budget, and I start talking about philosophy, about four policies. Um, and you have to think about what these things mean. So, um, this slide, the only thing it's doing to show you this down here, how you can go to, you have senses, you're quick facts and get information, right? Uh, I can't tell you how many times I've looked at this data to think about economic development, to think about, uh, inspections, to think about affordable housing, to think about what everyone may be, sanitation rates or whatever. And so, I'm gonna go through some of this data, and I only want you to think about it in just kind of broad terms. Uh, if I say something, don't attack me too, too close, because I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, right? I'm just putting it out there. Housing, notice across the top here, Spring Lake, Oak Mills, Fayetteville, Cumberland County, North Carolina, United States, okay? The housing, the only thing I want you to focus here is median value of owner occupied housing units. Notice Spring Lake is a hundred thousand, Oak Mills is a hundred and sixty-one, Fayetteville's a hundred and fifty-eight, Cumberland County's a hundred and sixty-six, North Carolina's two thirty-four, United States is two eighty-one, right? I just sold my house, and I will be closing on my house in South Carolina on June the fourteenth, and I sold it for two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, right? I bought it two years ago for two hundred thousand dollars. Not a bad deal, is it?
No.
Right? So, uh, what this, I want you to grasp from this is, um, the median value, half above that value, half below that value, okay? But that value, right or wrong, is based on data, and that data is gonna have to catch up with your reevaluation. But nevertheless, it is not a fair assessment to compare the tax rate for Spring Lake to the tax rate of Cumberland County from the tax rate of, of Mills when it comes to outdoor tax. Case in point is that, once again, which tax rate, right? The tax rate for Cumberland County, um, is seventy-nine nine, so seventy-nine cents point nine. They're kinda, I guess they're selling gas, they're gonna come out the low price, uh, seventy-nine, I did it too, I mean, I did it, but, uh, in Spring Lake, it's sixty-five. Now, note that the property values for Cumberland's one sixty-six, and median value in Spring Lake's one oh four, yet they're taxing it seventy-nine nine, we're taxing it sixty-five, plus the five for recreation. Okay, that, that, I, I don't mean anything, I just want you to think about it, that's all, okay? Um, just want you to think about it. Property values, notice down here, board of the board, right? I did put mayor, you know, Alder, Alder, Alder Woman Cooper, Chad, I just put board of. You can figure out what your tax value is here in the property value. But the craze value, um, what this is showing here, and I think it's a great comparison, just to think about it personally. When you make decisions as a board, when taxing, you are making a decision to tax yourself. People don't need to forget that. You're not trying to rob 'em, you're not trying to steal from 'em, you're not trying to hurt 'em, you're making the decision to tax yourself. Anytime you have to, uh, look at these types of decisions. Wherever you fall here, look at the top chart, we broke it down in, uh, increments of fifty thousand, okay? So, notice that if you're a hundred thousand home, you're taxed now for Spring Lake is six hundred and fifty dollars a year. If it's two thousand, two hundred thousand, go figure, it's twice as much, right? If you change to seventy-four point one, it's gonna go up to seven hundred and forty-one dollars for a difference of ninety-one dollars per year. This is just a way for you to, at a, at a glance, recognize what's happening to you, what's happening to our residents when we look at the taxes, ready?
Can you get this, uh, can you get this essential, is this, that is such a powerful.
This was sent to you. That's no parent, is it? You know why? That's when I finished it.
So, but seriously.
Let's keep real, that's when I finished it, that's why I sent it to you.
The slide is, is very important to break it down, because people hear tax increase and they get scared. You hear nine percent, you don't understand, but when you break it down to twenty-five cent per day, if it's seven thousand fifty cent per month, ninety-one dollars a year, it's a lot more powerful.
Yeah, people understand that, they understand.
That's a great breakdown.
So, um, yeah, it's there, um. Now, one of the other things, some of them get different type of assessments, uh, different type of exemption. You know that a lot of folks, one of the things, when we start talking about tax rates and tax budgets, we really don't know the late things, we don't know exemptions in terms of senior credits, uh, those type of things, we just have to estimate those. So, this is kind of, just keep it real, just keep it close, keep it real. We also look at, and we're recommending a five percent increase to the tier rates, we look at tier water bills and super bills, okay? So, the, the board member with the lowest consumption, right? I don't know what they do with, uh, I don't know. I know what the board members with the highest consumption does. I think they water plants and hay, but they're not. The board member with the lowest consumption, when we look at increasing, this is the twenty-four, the rate, we do the increase of five percent for twenty-five, they're going to experience an increase of two dollars a month, okay? Um, the one with the highest consumption, if you look at twenty-four over twenty-five, with a five percent increase for both the R and S, they're gonna recognize an increase of eight dollars and eighty-five cents a month. So, they got two choices, of course, right? I, I heard it down there, I know, Alder Rose, you know, you gotta think about what's going. And so, the reason you have tier rates is to encourage conservation. And so, that's why you put these things in place, and so, this is another one, just to show what we're talking about. Because if we say five percent, five percent of what? Well, five percent of your consumption, so you're in control of your consumption, you can choose to do this or choose to do that. So, um, water bill, this is personal stories, going through the, uh, finance department, they're gonna build it. And so, they did zero consumption reports, looked at the water bills, individual, fifty thousand line items, trying to find errors, they had three people looking at it, right? Because we didn't wanna send something out, we did, there were errors in the bills, Renee did some of that as well, we need to, they don't get a read. Um, but they called and they said, John, what in the world are you doing? Alright, so, they called and they said, you must have a leak or something. I said, yeah, I do, I was at those. And I said, yeah, I do, because I had to hand over that gray bird. It's been running all night long, forgot about it. You pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, you don't, you don't tell you have something wrong. Yeah, it was wrong, I forgot to cut it off. Consumption, you're in control of usage fees, whether it's electric rates, water rates, gas rates, whatever they give. So usage fee is important to grasp to...
Fix your toilets.
Fix your toilets. Uh, this one, and another one that I'm very keen on looking at because the population in Spring Lake at eleven-five oh seven, is it eleven-five oh six, eleven-five oh eight? All right? So it doesn't have to be absolute. Then you look at Oak Hills, at seventeen nine. All right? What I, what I try to glean from this type of data is now come down to income and poverty. It's household income, forty-four thousand. In Oak Hills, it's fifty-seven thousand. Fayetteville, fifty-three thousand, it's five thousand in Cumberland. And so, uh, once again, Spring Lake's a little lower. So we have to think about those things, right? In terms of water sewer rates, taxing, the old man, all that stuff there. So the taxing, the values are lower, so the impact is still impacted. The water usage rates are there, but we work in full, they got fixed toilets, they got to do different things, right? But we still have to think about this, this income, this poverty rate. The... Thinking about that in terms of forty-four thousand dollars, I don't, I don't, I don't really want to say it, but I'll say it. There was a time that between my wife and I, we paid that much in income taxes. Right? So I had a rental house in North Carolina, and now in Georgia. And I could type max it out there, and so this is the world of South Carolina. And I'm like, wow, this is incredible. I lost any tax payments just for the rental house, basically is what happened. I'm missing something. I know I'm missing, uh, the population. That sheet. All right? So you've got one of the, forgive me, I don't have it on the slide. I'll be back in a minute here, and I'm going to read it out to you. The geography of the census data. The geography of the census data, we'll be on the second page. Basically, it says that the population per square mile for Spring Lake is four hundred ninety-three. For Oak Hills, it's two thousand two hundred and twelve. For Fayetteville, it's one thousand four oh six. For Cumberland County, it's five twelve. And for the United States, it's two fourteen. Now, by definition, I think you probably go down with this, you are considered urban once you get a thousand per square mile. So Spring Lake, by definition, is not urban, it's rural. And we're trying to provide urban services over a rural environment. Okay? So that's what's led you to make a decision in terms of recreation, not just the funding. And so you're, you're trying to partner with folks that operate in rural environment to help create economies of scale, provide services. That's the same way you could do reviewing inspections, or regionalization of water, whatever it may be. So, but I think it's very, very interesting to look at the population per square mile and then consider the square miles. The square miles in land area for Spring Lake is booked at twenty-three point six four, and Oak Hills at eight point oh five. I don't know, think about this. How many heights does it take? How many fire hoppers does it take? Right? How many sewer lines does it take to cover twenty-three square miles versus eight square miles? That's another strong point of concept, you know? Grow your areas, not expand them. Right? You can do the infield, try to focus on those things. Because basically, you don't want to outrun head nights. Right? You don't want to outrun head nights, you got to be thinking about it. With that, I did highlight earlier the fund balance, I won't go over it, but I did want to share it with you. And so that would be in your presentation, so you have it carried with you. There's that number, how real it is, doesn't matter. Still anywhere needs to be on the market. But we still have some work to do. We continue to be very, very conservative in our budget. Continue to have to do fund balances, it will set us up in the future. So we want to go proper, proper with that in the sense of the efforts and the things that you do today when we reserve for future staff to voice, and that's very important. We don't want to take and have to leave it in channels. This is a, we need to know it, leave it better than found it, focus on it, um, moving forward. And finally, this is what we'll find in the budget message, it's the last paragraph. As required by the North Carolina General Statutes, the proposed budget is balanced with total revenues equal to total expenditures. I presented a budget that recommends an adware tax rate of seventy-four point one per one hundred valuation for the general fund. The North Carolina General Statute specified that the budget ordinance's tax rate be adopted by July one, twenty twenty-four. Also, General Statute one fifty-nine twelve requires the town's governing body, which under current circumstances is a local governing commission, to hold a public hearing on the budget prior to adoption. That public hearing is scheduled on June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Seven P M, the local governing commission will hold a public hearing on the project budget for the town of Spring Lake. The budget, the budget message, the information on the public hearing, and the information for the L G C adoption that the budget is set. On the Parker State Treasurer's website. That is also in the budget message, the link, the information in terms of that public hearing. You've got a very, very small window. I was supposed to present this to, the law says that I present it to the governing body by June the first. I asked for an extension to deliver this tomorrow. Deborah and I and staff have worked diligently over the past two weeks to present it a day early. And so, but we wanted to have it, where you could have a bite at it and see it before it went to the W D C, so that you could comment, reply, suggest. I don't know where it's going to go, but I wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to see this. It is a least, but it is a, I think it is a very conservative town's approach, trying to provide services for the town of Spring Lake. With that.
Thank you for one. Very welcome, Janet, very informative. And this is, it's, you're reaching your target audience, which is the community, and I appreciate that very much so. So I highly encourage citizens to review this, share it, if you guys can share it on your social media too, so that we can get this information out to the public. I know Jamie's going to do an amazing article about this, and I can't wait to get it out there, we need it, so we can share it. But the more people we can get, and this, this was the topic at lunch with the mayor today. We're spending your money, we're spending our money, so be involved. You wouldn't send us to Walmart with your debit card to go grocery shopping, you know, without some oversight and input. Don't do that for sure with your property tax, sales tax, all these things. Be involved. So is there anything from the board? You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roy, the staff, thank you very much for the hard work that's been put in there. It, it's refreshing to see real numbers and dedication and hard work that was put into this budget. For residents out there, I guess it does mean a tax increase. That's just how it is unfortunately. With today's economy, everything is going up. The services that has been provided to the, to the residents has greatly increased. We're glad to see that, that's out there. Stay involved, get, get involved in what's happening in our community and be a part of Spring Lake. Thank you, Mayor.
Dan Worthen?
Yes. I also wanted to echo all of the, like, sentiments. Thank you, Mr. Roy, or John, for all of this information you provide. The way you explain it, it makes it easier to understand. I believe we've been at the same tax rate for quite a bit, and we are actually, you know, inflation requires that we do raise taxes. And we thank the staff for all the hard work, these great presentations as well. And as the mayor says, please share it, I hope it's going on the town website, even, I don't know, some of our social media pages, because I, I want people to be informed and understand. You know, I continue to share the YouTube channel. If people have a question, I will find the YouTube of the meeting that where we discuss something. And I tell them, look for yourself, you know, you don't have to come to the meeting in person. So, you know, I'm really excited. Although it is an increase, I'm so excited, because I think we're going in the right direction. I would like to see a little more teeth on all of these fees that have been sitting stagnant for years. I, I believe, I really believe we should, and I also believe we should find a way to, you know, those people who are needing our services but aren't paying taxes, I feel like we need to find a way to recruit some of the money. If it's possible, you can say, you know, we can continue this for this amount of time, people will have to come into the polls or find another source. I'd like to even put something like that. But thank you.
Like, like I said, if cost is going up, and you have to pay to live in the town, we're using the money that you pay, that we all pay, to run the town. Same way eggs cost more, water costs more.
Everything changes.
Yeah. All the classes, that's right, everything's a business thing, especially this, all the classes.
So I again thank everybody for doing this. I know this is a hard part of everybody's ear, figuring this out, and also getting told no. You know, and as I'm, you know, this is the first time we've seen this also. And as John stated, he put it together, finalized it this afternoon. So I appreciate you jumping in also and getting in, working into the weeds in this. You know, my first impression is I knew that there would be a cost increase. I knew that there would be a cost increase for both taxes and for our water usage. Is there any update to the study that was supposed to be going on regarding water rates? Do we know anything about that?
No, we're in conversations with the consulting engineers, but we didn't have an update.
Okay. As it looks right now, you know, hearing that about Manchester Fire Station, we can't afford it. That's, if there is an alternate plan, you know, I'm not saying it today because you're on a strict deadline right now. But I hope conversations and things are being done about where we're sitting at with Manchester. I mean, I'd hate to see it go also. That's not a decision we're going to be making today, I'm not saying that, I'm just, these numbers are not working.
At all.
So I appreciate you trying to do some work on the shortfall that we're expecting on that, but as it stands right now, we can't afford Manchester Fire Station.
Without the utilization of that district, that area.
Yeah, but we're also, we won't get enough tax money out of our heels to afford that either. G F L, just to make sure I understand, their contract is going up by twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they dealt off on their increases for the past couple of years as well. So it's just not like a one-year thing, they didn't, they didn't increase it two years in the past.
Right. This was, um...
They're just catching up.
In regards to the, all the issues we were having, this dates back to when Joe was here. And we specifically told G F L, we're not handing you more until you do better with our services. And so they kept our contract the same for the past two years, and for them to try and, and better our services. But that was a conversation, a hard conversation, and we had to have to tell them, no, you're, you're not going to increase our rates because they weren't very good.
And stormwater, how are we, do we have the projects already outlined for that? Because I know there have been projects funded in the past for Goodyear and for Wat-Pee.
I, I've visited a couple of sites, but Deanna had to speak to that issue.
As far as Goodyear is concerned, we are still in the process of getting someone to come out here and do a study for it, figure out exactly what needs to be done. I've talked to a couple of engineering firms. I've been basically turned down because we don't have enough money to pay them and fix the problem. So right now, I'm still monitoring that. For Wat-Pee, I have a request in for a grant from Golden Leaf, nine hundred thousand dollars. They have their meeting next week. I will find out the following week whether or not we get that nine hundred thousand dollars or some portion of it. But if we do not, I will be pursuing other funding avenues for that. It's just kind of difficult when you can't grant match at this time. Golden Leaf was a completely non-matching grant, I didn't have to put anything else into it. So I am searching for other grants like that, just in case. But I have a fairly good feeling that we'll at least get some of that from Golden Leaf.
From Golden Leaf.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I will find out after like the second week of June.
So I, I, why was there no grant application for Goodyear when that's, you know, it was funded several years ago and kept, it's been put on the back burner, back burner, but why was there no grant application for Goodyear?
There have been grant applications, we've been turned down. We just did not qualify for them. I've been working on that now for five years, I just, every time I put something in, I get nothing back.
We, I, I don't agree with you, but we hear the one place and not here for another good...
That, that hundred thousand dollars for Goodyear is still in the budget, it's still there. It has not been used, it has not been touched. It's just, as costs go up and everything, we just, we have to add to it in order to accomplish the same thing that we should have accomplished four years ago. When COVID hit, nobody wants to come out, stand next to you, do an evaluation. So we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of challenges in the last four years that I've been trying to navigate. And so far, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Now, Goodyear, that is, I have been monitoring it, it, it does back up. It still does not prevent emergency vehicles from going through. It does drain quite relatively quickly. Wat-Pee has been a much more dangerous situation for the residents and for the emergency vehicles, so I have been focusing more on that. Like I said, second week of June, hopefully we'll have good news.
So...
Dan? Dan Worthen?
No, I just, I don't, I don't know what the funding is, but here, you know, like you asked about it all the time, we've been messing with this for... Since I've been in office since seventeen, so I would like something, some funding somewhere. There is also, is that part of that project, the ditch project?
That is, yes, that is the same project.
Yes, we ran a deal with that since seventeen, so I, I think there is, you know, there should be some expectancy for that because this is here for a long, it is, nobody, we didn't think about how to fix it. And it's, and I think it's been a problem longer. It's been a problem longer than Wat-Pee.
Yes, I, I do agree, it's been a problem longer, but it has not been as dangerous as Wat-Pee. We literally, we, we had to close off the street, people could not get to their, their driveways. Emergency vehicles cannot get through without stalling. So that was, that was a higher priority as far as health and safety than the Goodyear project was. And the only, I was not in control of the budget, I'll be put in that way.
Deanna, let's follow through, okay?
Yes.
If this, do you need an update?
I will.
As soon as possible.
I will. I will.
Andre Prasas?
No, no. I'm just...
Okay. Thanks. That's what I thought. Bye. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Just thank you to everyone. All right. Um, that is all that we have to get, thank you guys for coming out. Um, that is all that we have to get, thank you guys for coming out, share the video. Um, thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate each and everyone, you know, when Jamie writes that article, please bless it everywhere. All right.